Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Mobile County Commission meeting for May the 13th, 2024, and call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the invocation be given by Chapel and Philip Snodgrass from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, this morning we wish to join the Heavenly Host in praising You for Your greatness and glory. We praise You for Your strength and power. We praise You for Your mercy and compassion. Lord, we praise You for Your wisdom and understanding. We praise You because all Your plans are perfect and assured. We praise You because You are worthy of all sacrifice and service. This morning, we choose to praise You and exalt Your name forever. It is for Your glory and Your honor we serve. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. This morning, we have some special guests with us this morning. We have Director Rodrick Frye from the B.C. Rain High School Chorus, and they are here today because the Commission had sponsored a trip to Chicago for a competition, and I think they're here to give us an update on how they did in the competition. Is that right, Coach Frye? Thank you.
Good morning. Recognizing District One Commissioner Mrs. Marceria Ludgood, District Two Commissioner Mrs. Connie Hudson, and District Three Commissioner Mr. Randall Duet. It gives me great pleasure to speak on behalf of Mr. Rodrick Frye and the B.C. Rain High School Choral Department to personally thank you for your support in helping us to attend the World Stride Choral Festival in Chicago, Illinois. Last spring, Mr. Frye presented us with a plan to perform in a national competition. The chance for our Choral Department to participate in this competition was very exciting, but raising the necessary funds to attend seemed very challenging. We were committed to doing everything in our power to make this dream a reality. When Mr. Frye told us that you would sponsor our Chicago trip, we were filled with both excitement and thankfulness. We are eternally grateful for your continued support of our Choral Department and the investment that you continuously make in our academic endeavors.
We left for Chicago in the 56th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. assassination. We were able to stop by the Little Rain Motel and briefly join in a commemorative celebration that was occurring. While in Chicago, we attended the musical Peter Pan, toured the Shered Aquarium, shopped on a magnificent mall, and ate at Chicago's legendary Giordano's Pizza. We had much success in Chicago. We placed second in the overall Choral Festival and received a gold rating, the highest rating that any choir can receive. Two of our students, Julia Dillard and Jordan Guyton, received the Maestro Award for their musicianship. There are only three of these awards given in the whole competition. Additionally, our Choral Department also received the Spirit of Chicago Award in recognition of behavior and spirit of unity. Because of our gold rating, we have a two-year standing innovation to participate in the World Strides Festival of Gold and Carnage Hall. We thank you so much for your continued support of our Choral Department. This experience will be with us for the rest of our lives and the-
Thank you, Mr. Frye and the B.C. Rain Chorus for being here today. Fantastic job, and congratulations to you guys. Next, I think we have a resolution for the 2024 National Safe Boating Week to be held May the 18th through the 24th, and it'll be presented to E. Bernard Beck, Division Vice Commander from the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, be presented by Commissioner Ludgood. Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hudson. Yeah, Mr. Frye, if you guys, I know, I know the, I know the chorus probably don't want to go back to school, but if you guys need to go, you can be dismissed, or you can stay for the entire meeting. Y'all are welcome to stay. Do y'all want to go back to school, or y'all want to stay here?
Did you, did you have, did you have to swim? Well, we're so happy to have you here again with us today, and in recognition of National Safe Boating Week, which will be May 18th through the 24th, the resolution reads, "Whereas many Mobile County residents engage in boating, fishing, and other recreational activities on the navigable waters around the state of Alabama; and whereas, on average, 600 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States; and whereas, many of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment, and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors; and whereas, alcohol use is the leading known contributing factor in fatal boating accidents; and whereas, operator inattention and experience are also leading contributing factors in mishaps, causing hundreds of accidents and dozens of fatalities annually. The United States Coast Guard considers operator use of engine cutoff switches to be important when operators of powerboats are ejected or fall overboard. The boat will typically continue to operate until it runs out of fuel, runs around, or collides with another boat or object. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And boating safety courses and boating safety campaigns can teach people how to adhere to better boating practices and help them to boat more safely. And whereas, according to the statistics from the United States Coast Guard of the accidents where the level of operator education was known, 75% of boating deaths occurred on boats where the boat operator had never received boating education instruction. And now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission designates May 18th through 24th as Safe Boating Week in Mobile County, Alabama. In conjunction with the United States Coast Guard's Safe Boating Campaign and its year-round efforts to encourage safe recreational boating, Mobile County encourages residents and visitors to be prepared, courteous boaters, and above all, to their approved flotation devices." And this was in witness, signed by Commissioner Duet, Commissioner Ludgood, myself, and our Administrator, Eddie Kerr.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mobile County Commissioners, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, please understand that boating safety starts at home. It starts at a young age. If you're going to have your children out on boats, be it in the Gulf, be it on the rivers, streams, please make sure that they have personal flotation devices. Boat safe, so everybody comes home smart, safe and smart. Thank you so much.
Thank you again for being here.
I think before we, before we go into speakers, I want to do our special recognition for our Mobile County Commission Earth Day-inspired art contest. The winner's artwork will be displayed at Government Plaza this week. The art was created from fully recycled or reused material, which included paints, collages, sculptures, drawings, and found objects. Winners will receive county swag and a $10 gift card from the Chick-fil-A. And I'm going to give special recognition to the teachers who inspired and led the artwork. Danielle King from Hutchins Elementary, Rebecca Wright from Council Traditional, Cheryl Akram from Causey Middle, and Alicia Spencer from Denton Middle. And I think Cherie is going to announce our winners today. So, Cherie?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So, we had several submissions, and we had one kindergartner submit, and that was Luciana Alvarez from Briggs Elementary. She receives an honorable mention for her masterpiece known as "Recyclable Pig." So, Luciana is the only kindergartner who is receiving an award. Aura Adikari from Allentown Elementary School in first grade for her art piece entitled "Help the Earth Be Happy by Taking Care of It." Second grade was a group from Hutchins Elementary, Kayla Sue Bateman, Ava Resendez, and Suri White, and their, their teacher's name was Danielle King, and their art piece was entitled "King Turtle." Second grade also for her art piece called "Happy Place," Madeline Maddie Kirkland for, from Casslin Elementary School. And then another from second grade, it's a paper mache pencil created by Sunny Alawi from Council Traditional School, and her teacher's Rebecca Wright. Michael Thickepin was also a second grader, and his, he had a drawing, and he's from Dixon Elementary. Marianna Alvarez, who's Luciana's big sister, from Briggs Elementary in fifth grade, submitted a drawing as well. Kaylee Moore with Council Traditional School, her teacher's Rebecca Wright, and she had a paper mache pencil as well. So, those are elementary. Middle schoolers are Caleb Mott Alvo from Causey Elementary, and his teacher is Cheryl Ankrum, and his art piece was entitled "Don't Let the Earth Wilt Away." He's in eighth grade. Aiden Davis with Causey Middle, Middle School, he's also in eighth grade, and his art piece is entitled "Nature, the Strongest Force." And then Jack Hill from Denton Middle School, his teacher is Alicia Spencer, and his art piece was entitled "Garbage Monster," and he was in eighth grade. So, not everyone's here, but we welcome all of you who contributed, and we are glad that you're here to be recognized today. Thank you once again to all the teachers and the students who participated, and the art will be on display in Government Plaza.
Congratulations once again. And now we'll move on. Cherie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have one person signed up to speak. Rhonda Gullidge will be speaking about the Alabama Kidney Foundation and the Annual Kidney Walk.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Gullidge, 205 Government Street. I am here representing the Alabama Kidney Foundation. Becky Conley and Neil Gustafson were supposed to be here, but because of the weather, y'all get me. I'm on the South Alabama Regional Board of Advisors, so I'm here to thank y'all for your generous donation to the Alabama Kidney Walk. In 2024's walk, we raised over $230,000. All of this money stays in our community. It provides direct financial support to patients in Mobile County for transportation to and from dialysis. We also pay power bills and other bills if they need help financially. The Alabama Kidney Foundation also educates the community, patients, and families. So, this year, we will be celebrating the, well, in 2025, be celebrating the 50th year as an Alabama nonprofit, and our walk is tentatively scheduled for March 22nd, and we do have a Mobile County Commission team, if y'all would like to join, and we encourage y'all to come out and enjoy the day with us. So, thank you again for your donation.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
No more speakers?
Mr. Carr?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item one, approve list of claims.
So moved. Second?
Two, approve appropriation contract with Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $10,000 from District One Commission funds to help support the band program at Callaway Smith Middle School.
So moved. Second?
Three, approve appropriation contract with the Distinguished Young Women of Mobile County, Alabama, in the total amount of $3,000 for its college scholarship program, funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Four, approve appropriation contract with Spencer Westlon Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of $3,500 from District Two Education Funds to purchase supplies for the summer reading camp at Spencer Westlon Elementary School.
So moved. Second?
Five, approve appropriation contract with the Clotilda Descendants Association in the amount of $10,000 from District One Commission Funds for the landing event honoring their arrival of the 110 survivors of the Clotilda.
So moved. Second?
Six, approve appropriation contract with Soccer for Life in the amount of $7,500 from District One Commission Funds for operational expenses.
So moved. Second?
Seven, approve sponsorship agreement with 100 black men of Greater Mobile in the total amount of $1,200 for its 23rd annual gala and scholarship awards. Funds are divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Eight, approve appropriation contract with the Alabama Kidney Foundation in the total amount of $5,000 for its Kidney Walk and Celebration Event, funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Nine, adopt resolution approving request of the County Garage to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare those items as surplus, and authorize those items to be disposed of by local means.
So moved. Second?
Ten, approve amendment to memorandum of understanding among the Mobile County Sheriff's Department, U.S. Marshal Service, and Mobile County Commission to decrease total funded amount of $22,000 for overtime reimbursement by $4,000. The new total amount is $18,000.
So moved. Second?
Eleven, approve request of the Environmental Services Department to purchase vehicle from the Revenue Commission for fair market value in the amount of $14,500.
So moved. Second?
Twelve was voted at conference. Thirteen, authorize adoption and submission of the 2024 Year Five Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated documents.
So moved. Second?
Fourteen, approve Mobile County Commission's letter of support of MediaCom's grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund for one broadband project in the county.
So moved. Second?
Fifteen, approve Mobile County Commission's letter of support of Comcast's grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Alabama Broadband Accessibility Fund for one broadband project in the county.
So moved. Second?
Sixteen, approve amendment number one with the Architects Group for project Replace Public Works Camera System at Camps One, Two, Three, and Four. This amendment will increase services to include the addition of design work for Camp Four. The contract amount will increase by $14,500.
So moved. Second?
Seventeen, award bid to Vision Security Technologies for project Replace Public Works Camera System at Camps One, Two, Three, and Four for a total bid in the amount of $486,457.68.
So moved. Second?
Eighteen, award bid to Integrity Maintenance for Camp One Two-story building renovation for a total bid in the amount of $305,000.
So moved. Second?
Nineteen, approve assignment to the Architects Group for modifications to the sign shop located at Camp One. The work will consist of complete design and specifications associated with the development of a new sign shop located at Camp One in the amount of $47,332.45.
So moved. Second?
Twenty, approve assignment to PH and J Architects for modifications to the Metro Gel for a medical observation room. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associated with the development of this project in the amount of $101,200.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-one, authorize memorandum of understanding with the Grand Bay Waterworks Board regarding the implementation of the Grand Bay Sewer Service Project included in the Resources and Ecosystems Sustainability, Terrorist Opportunities, and Revised Economies of the Gulf Coast Act of 2012. Funded priorities list three, comprehensive plan, subject to final legal review.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-two, authorize acceptance of a grant award and the subrecipient agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Grand Bay Sewer Service Project in the amount of $337,344.65 with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents pending legal review.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-three, authorize acceptance of a grant award and subrecipient agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Ballabatri North Sewer System Improvements Project in the amount of $206,200 with no match required, and authorize execution of all associated documents pending legal review.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-four was voted at conference. Twenty-five, approve list of credits and solvents and litigations for the Revenue Commission's 2023 tax year.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-six, approve professional services contract with Banks Compton to provide a mule program for James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $12,000.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-seven, approve professional services contract with Sam Mead Williams to provide a communications audit and resource plan for James T. Strickland Youth Center in the amount of $15,840.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-eight, approve agreements for grant funds for the Community Traffic Safety Program through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for overtime of traffic safety enforcement for the Click It or Ticket Memorial Day Enforcement Program in a total amount not to exceed $45,983, and drive sober or get pulled over in a total amount not to exceed $51,977.40 for projects as follows.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-nine, approve bid to garner construction for a project extension of effluent forced main from Ballabatri wastewater treatment facility Phase Two for their total low bid in the amount of $15,999,800, and authorize execution of contract documents.
So moved. Second?
Tina, do you, are you aware of when the construction will begin on that?
Tina, do you, are you aware of when the construction will begin on that?
Good morning. I would anticipate the contracts being executed and having a pre-construction meeting within the next three weeks.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thirty, approve contract amendment number two with Thompson Engineering for a contract for Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan to add Task Three Building Assessment of the Dave Patton House.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-one, approve authorization by the Director of Finance to obligate $1,325,667.69 of 2024 capital improvements warrants for Project Chickasabo Park Campground Improvements per the provisions of Section Three of the Preliminary Resolution adopted in the Mobile County Commission, November 13 minutes, Agenda Item Number Nine.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-two, award bid to Jay Hunt Enterprises for Project Chickasabo Park Campground Improvements for their total bid in the amount of $3,528,346.50 and authorize execution of contract documents to be paid from the following funding sources.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-three, approve appropriation contract with the Mobsters of Baseball and South Alabama Foundation in the total amount of $7,500 for operational expenses. Funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-four, approve contract with Dogwood Productions to build and host a functional and searchable website for the Mobile County Park System to inform the public about Mobile County Commission's parks, sports parks, trails, districts, camping, water access, other amenities, and park activities in the amount of up to $50,000, including the first year's hosting fees, support maintenance, and ADA accessibility widget. And upon approval of the Mobile County Commission, an amount of up to $5,000 per year for hosting, support, maintenance, and ADA accessibility fees.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-five, approve assignment of the Alight Solutions Contract for Payroll and Professional Services dated September 27, 2022 to HIG Capital and authorize County Administrator to execute the consent on behalf of Mobile County Commission.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-six, approve sponsorship agreement with Afriktown Community Development Corporation in the amount of $2,500 from District One Commission Funds for the Afriktown Bridge Challenge.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-seven, approve donor-advised endowed fund with the Community Foundation of South Alabama in the amount of $25,000 from District One Education Funds. The donor-advised endowed fund with the Community Foundation of South Alabama will support the acquisition and maintenance of sites of historical significance related to African-American contributions to Mobile County and deposit $25,000 from District One Education Funds into the said fund and authorize the President of the Commission to sign all relevant documents.
So moved. Second?
Items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty were voted at conference. Forty-one, consider taking the following actions on bids.
So moved. Second?
Forty-two, approve renewal of subscription agreement with GoTo Technologies USA in the amount of $12,750 for rescue services for the Mobile County Commission.
So moved. Second?
Forty-three, approve three-year renewal agreement with NH&amp;A Antivirus Firewall and Security Solutions in the amount of $8,484 for antivirus software for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved. Second?
Forty-four, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Blue Alley in the amount of $15,778.56 for VMware Maintenance Subscription for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved. Second?
Forty-five, approve renewal of software agreement with Mike Hoffman's Equipment Service in the amount of $2,140 for tank monitoring inspections and IDS software updates for Camp One, Two, and Three and the Public Works Administration.
So moved. Second?
Forty-six, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Leeds Online in the amount of $3,085 for Cellhawk Investigator for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved. Second?
Forty-seven, approve renewal of subscription agreement with Questica under the current purchasing cooperative Omnia EDU contract in the amount of $46,973. Cost decreased by $20,600 from initial amount of $67,573 for Software as a Service, Open Book, and Budget Book Annual.
So moved. Second?
Forty-eight, approve 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation CPC Office Technologies from the current State of Alabama contract for two Sharp copiers at a cost of $72.64 each per month for the Road and Bridge Department.
So moved. Second?
Forty-nine was voted at conference. Fifty, approve assigning contract for professional engineering services for construction engineering and inspection for project safety improvements on Bellengraph Road from State Route 188 to Half Mile Road, Lawrendine Road, to Keenly Horn and Associates.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-one, award bid to HCL Contracting for Project Howells Ferry Road at Fire Tire Road Intersection Improvements for their low bid in the amount of $2,213,777.77.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-two, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Booth Town Road and Mason Ferry Road, Gray Drain Basin Pave.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-three, approve preliminary and final plat of Sandy Creek Unit One and preliminary and final plat of Harold Julia Subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Embry's Pecan Road Resubdivision in addition to Lot Three and preliminary and final plat of Resubdivision of Sims Subdivision and preliminary and final plat of Coxwell Crossing Unit Two and preliminary and final plat of Resubdivision of Lot One on Creel Road Subdivision.
Matthew, would you mind coming down? I want to, I want you to give an explanation. I know no one's here to speak about it, but I've received several emails about Coxwell Crossing, the 13 lots on McLeod Road, and it basically is, it looks like kind of a uniform email for safety reasons. We recommend the Commission to consider recommending that the 12 curve-cut entrances on McLeod Road reduce to one, the length approximately 1,075 feet. Anyway, goes on 12 metal boxes holes along the proposal entrance is not safe. And my response as recommended by you after we have spoken was that, as most, when we receive these subdivision plans and they meet our county standards, and I think they were not only asking that we consider making one out of 12 entrances, which I don't think McLeod Road is a very highly traveled road anyway, but I guess my explanation, and I wanted you to give the same explanation in case there are any questions about us passing this, is that if they meet our subdivision standards that we put forth, then we're kind of obligated by law to approve these subdivisions. Would that be correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. If the subdivision plaque proposed meets the subdivision regulations, the state law says the County Commission shall approve. These, this is a pretty low-volume residential-type road. Site distance, pretty much as far as you can see, it's pretty flat out there. We have nothing in our authority that would allow us to control the access to that road the same way we would if it were a higher classification road such as a collector or an arterial, which I think we've had some experience in all the districts recently of, including one on the agenda today where we have limited access of where we could. In this case, we don't have that authority.
Thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-four, approve resurfacing the parking lots for the Georgetown Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $40,225.17.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-five, approve amending the Mobile County Commission February 26 minutes, Agenda Item Number Fifty-Five, as follows. Change project number for resurfacing the parking lot for the Wilmer Volunteer Fire Department.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-six, approve summary change order with Dorsh Figures and Signs for Jeremiah A. Denton Airport Replacement of Bulkhead Phase Two for additional erosion control measures in the amount of $23,374.50. An adjustment of the final plan quantities to match the final installed quantities decreasing contract by $16,228.46 for a total contract cost of $1,408,369.48.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-seven, approve supplemental agreement number three with Frank Turner Construction for Project Tanner Williams Road Additional Lanes for additional supplies and work necessary due to the conflict with an existing water line and storm sewer pipe installation in the amount of $114,253.70, of which $93,430.70 is reimbursable from Mobile Area Water and Sewer System per project utility agreement.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements on Ziegler Boulevard in the total amount of $22,905. Funds divided as follows for Project Ziegler Boulevard Additional Lanes.
So moved. Second?
Fifty-nine, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners or the following projects.
So moved. Second?
And Commissioners, we do have one add-on this morning. Add-on number one, approve, and we do have a modification to that that's printed on the agenda and will read as follows. Approve lease agreement between the Mobile County Commission and Nash Property Holdings for seven undeveloped parcels of property located east of Kidd Park and bound between Shelby Street, Edwards Street, and Paper Mill Road to be used by the county for landscape buffers and parking facilities to support county efforts to construct Afriktown Hall for a term of 10 years at a cost of $10 per year pending final legal review.
So moved. Second?
Sixty, Commission announcements and/or comments?
I want to, I have one announcement. Brad, and I want to talk about just real quick. I mean, we, I think we have the best staff and team members and employees anywhere in this area, but, and I, and this isn't to say that everybody doesn't do this, but I just see Brad sitting here and I just wanted to tell a little story. I text Brad Saturday evening, late, not intending for the work to get done that immediate, but there was a red light out in my district, not the whole signal, just one of the lights were out. And I sent him a text, I went home. About an hour later, I left and come back out and they were out there fixing it. About 30 minutes later, the light was fully functional again. And I just want to say thank you, Brad, and recognize you and your guys for getting that done. It was quite surprising. I was expecting this morning maybe they would do it, but thank you guys and thank all of our employees and team members and staff for all the hard work that you guys do. That's, that's to everybody, but Brad just happens to be sitting here today to get the pat on the back, so thank you, Brad.
Yeah, I, I feel, I send my apologetic emails at night and on the weekend and they still respond. So I just, I really appreciate that.
And I have, I have that same thing happen with me whenever I contact any member of the staff. I mean, whether it's a, I mean, it may be late at night, it may be early in the morning or a weekend, but there's always a response and it's much appreciated. Thank you all.
Except Jay Rolfe, I can't get him to call me after four calls over the weekend. Okay, Jay, don't worry about it.
Well, it's because you called for Metro Connect. That might have something to do with it.
I'm supposed to tell all my secrets, Commissioner.
I got somebody else to make my bar.
I'll get the sheriff to help me next time.
Anyway, thank, thanks to all of you, Ricky, Kim, everybody who just, Eric does a fantastic job on this side too.
Everybody on this side too.
This side too. I'm not going to get the name of everybody's names, but everyone does a fantastic job and response.
I spend a lot of time worrying Matthew and Tina over this.
Yeah, me too. Tina and Matthew.
Very responsive.
Gordon. All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Anusha.
Anusha?
Definitely Anusha.
I know it's not.
I call her sometimes when she's out of the country.
Cherie. Anybody I missed. Thank you.
Sixty-one, approve request for motion to adjourn until May 28, 2024.